Welcome to the Harrison Township Planning Commission meeting. Today is February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is now approximately seven oh five. For tonight's meeting, Chairwoman Murray is out of town. She is excused, so I am Mike Blum, I'm the Vice Chair. I will be chairing the meeting tonight. Also excused is our Secretary, Dean O'Giatey. So Member Batja has agreed to be acting Secretary for tonight's meeting. So Mr. Batja, I will call the meeting to order if we could have a roll call.
Member Batja present. Member O'Giatey is excused. Member Oparka?
Here.
Member Tominalo?
Here.
Member Mulder?
Here.
And Chairperson Murray is excused. And Member Blum?
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda? And on the agenda, I will notice that C is the election of officers. I think there's been some discussion with two planning commissioners missing that we may push that, but I'd prefer to wait for a motion on that. So I think we should leave that on the agenda for the moment. Any other proposed changes to the agenda? Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with removing the election of officers and adding an agenda item to introduce Mr. Ken Mulder. Do we have a second?
I'll support that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's passed. Okay, with the election of officers off the agenda, push to the next meeting, the introduction of Ms. Mulder. Mr. Tominalo, since you made the motion, I will let you take it over.
Sure, sure. So I just want to introduce one of our newest planning commissioners, Mr. Ken Mulder. He comes to us from the Huron Point area and he's active in the homeowner association and a lot of the activities that are going around in the neighborhood. So he's a welcome addition to the, to the planning commission. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the minutes we have before us for approval are from the meeting of November sixteenth. The agenda says November twentieth. The minutes I'm looking at are the sixteenth. Which one is it?
The table. The agenda is a table.
Okay, so the correct date is the twentieth.
Whatever's on the minutes, I'm sorry.
The sixteenth is the...
Okay, the minutes are the sixteenth, the agenda says the twentieth.
So the agenda is a table.
Okay. So... We can change the agenda to reflect that the minutes are November sixteenth. Looking at the draft minutes of November sixteenth, are there any recommended or suggested changes? Make a motion to approve the minutes November sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. They're written.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. We're now in the public, the hearings and reviews. We have one item for discussion tonight, a public hearing. And this concerns a draft, Charter Township of Harrison ordinance. The draft is dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. And I would ask at this time if we could have either the township attorney or the planner discuss this briefly, exactly what is this draft ordinance? You know, how was it developed? Why is it before us?
Okay, well, dear planning commission members, this is set for a public hearing to introduce a draft ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance. As you may be aware, the Township Board adopted an ordinance to allow medical marijuana facilities within the township. They're going to allow grow operations, processing operations, secure transporters, and, I'm missing one, safety compliance facilities.
Okay, if I could just interrupt you, there seems to be some... Hey Darren?
Yeah?
We're getting, we're getting...
A little feedback?
Well, I don't know if it's feedback, but we're getting, it stopped when you opened the door, so it must have been you. Oh, there it is. You hear that? Thank you.
Hopefully we can correct that, sorry.
Okay. The township is not allowing for provisioning centers within the township. Given that that ordinance passed, we needed to make certain amendments to the zoning ordinance to provide for allowing in the industrial zone those types of facilities as a permitted use. So that's what this ordinance does, the zoning ordinance. It also makes some small changes to some typographical changes that were needed to go along with home occupation. And it also tightens up the intent on dealing with primary caregivers and their grow operations within the residential zones and industrial zones in our township. And the zoning ordinance amendment just clarifies, within the zoning industrial district where medical marijuana facilities are going to be located, that they cannot be located within a buffer district that we've created. And we, the planner has created a map to show you where these industrial districts can be located. And that's what, basically, is a summary of what this ordinance is.
Okay, thank you.
And it was actually initiated by the Township Board, not the planning commission, because they drafted and approved, well, they didn't draft, but they approved the adoption of the ordinance to allow for the facilities. And this is just a companion ordinance to cover all of our bases for the township.
Okay, and procedurally, today we are to discuss this, we're going to open up the public hearing here, public comment, and then...
And then your action is to either recommend an approval or, you know, a motion to approve, recommend approval of this ordinance, or approval with some suggested changes, or you recommend that they don't adopt it.
Right, which, which would be at the next meeting, correct?
Well, that, that is, it's up to the board. You could do that today.
So that's something we can discuss.
Right, or you could do it if you choose to think about it some more or have further, you know, insight into it, you could do it at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the members of the commission?
No, I, so, so... No, I just wanted to say, so yeah, so the board worked on this and, and we think we got it pretty clean. There's, so I think there's two things. First of all, it's, it's the permitted uses in the nursery corridor, but it also talks about the home care. So I think the home care, although we should need to focus on the entire document, I think it's the home care that we need to be most concerned about, because that's homes that are in our neighborhoods that are going to have the ability to grow under Michigan law at their residence. So, you know, we have, here's our opportunity to make sure it's, it's within boundaries and meets approval and, you know, so I would say that's probably the main focus, but the whole document has to be addressed.
Okay.
Can I just add on that? You know, under the MMA, caregivers are allowed to grow in their homes. This just amendment to our ordinance just clarifies that we are classifying them as a home occupation. And being classified as such, they are required to register their location only with the township so that if there are certain building changes that are required, they, they come in and are appropriately, you know, inspected and they need, they would need to get any other electrical or plumbing or whatever permits the township could, you know, oversee that. And it also provides other restrictions as well that are set within this ordinance with regard to, like, certain things like prohibiting marijuana plant extraction by butane and, and certain, you know, safety requirements that we put into this zoning ordinance as a home occupation. And it also provides a buffer zone as well as a home occupation that a primary registered caregiver, you know, has to be located outside of a thousand-foot radius of a school or childcare, daycare facility, you know, and other playgrounds, and it's listed in here. So we put in some restrictions for that home care operation.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners?
I make a motion to open the public hearing for amendments. I'm sorry. To review the ordinance to amend, well, should I read the whole thing? How about just to the MM, medical marijuana?
How about just right there?
Ordinance, local ordinance.
Support.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. We have support. Can I have a roll call?
Member Tominalo?
Yes.
Member Batja, yes. Member Oparka?
Yes.
Member Mulder?
Yes.
Chairperson Blum?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is open. At this point, I would welcome anybody who would like to come up and address this issue. They can do so at this time. Please state your name and your address.
Wonderful. Good evening, Justin Danaskis, 169 West Clarkston Road, Lake Orion, Michigan. Appreciate you giving me a few minutes of seam talk on the subject matter. Your township board, city attorney, citizens, business owners have certainly had a lot of opportunity to weigh in on the subject matter and really appreciate this commission's role as well as being active participants in the board and the thought they put into this. And just here to briefly offer up my support this evening for the draft ordinance as presented, I think the subject matter, you know, has been, you know, pretty well vetted as it relates to also the planning and zoning side with the MMMA ordinance that has been in effect for quite a while, allowing those caregivers to operate in the industrial setting. It's really appropriate to, as to where these obviously new commercial facilities should be located in your industrial district. Further, the state statute actually specifically requires one of the four license types that you're allowing to grow facilities in the industrial. So with that, I know there's been a lot of discussion on it. I know not specifically as much at this board level, but I know you folks have been well brought to speed and, you know, following us along as well. Again, I think it's a pretty straightforward ordinance and urge you to move swiftly on it so that way the landlords, tenants, residents can start making that transition into the new state regulated market and continue on from the work that's been done. So with that, if I can offer up any, you know, insight as we're in over two hundred communities talking the subject matter, as well as I chair my own planning commission, always look forward to serve as a resource and assist you folks as you move forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, Ronnie Whittle. I'll be very brief as well. I'm a...
Your address, please.
42278 Executive Drive, Harrison Township. I'm a commercial business owner in Harrison Township. I would just kind of put emphasis on the same thing Justin said. I have my certificate of compliance in the township. We are moving forward to obtain commercial licensing. I've already actually filled out the pre-qual for step one with Laura and the State of Michigan. So it's kind of, I don't, you know, I'm not trying to put any pressure on the board, so to speak, but I just, it, you know, it sounds like things have progressed and moved forward, so it will help us as business owners and with our application process to submit, call it step two, once Harrison Township has, you know, finalized everything. So I do appreciate all the work from everyone and, and I hope to, you know, move forward and, you know, in this regulated market, I think it'll be a good thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Anybody else would like to address this? Saying none. Any other questions or comments from the members of the commission? Motion to close the public hearing?
Um, Mr. Blum, just a, if you, if you wanted to continue discussion at the board level, I'd recommend leaving it open and close it at the end or probably close it before and have board discussion, I would imagine. Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
And I think we need a roll call for this as well, so can we have a roll call?
Member Tominalo?
Yes.
Member Batja, yes. Member Oparka?
Yes.
Member Mulder?
Yes.
Chairperson Blum?
Yes.
Okay, so the public hearing has been opened and it has been closed. At this point, I think we can talk about the next step. It's my understanding that we can talk about either addressing the recommendation tonight or spending a month to think about it and address it at the next meeting. So are there any thoughts or comments or questions about that?
So Mike, I just want to make sure that the board has had the opportunity to read through the ordinances in detail and digest, you know, its content. If you feel positive, we could, we could invoke a three-quarter rule and vote tonight. If you feel you need additional time to take the public comments and have a better, clearer understanding on the, on the ordinance, we can, we can move it that way as well. Or we can discuss it here and if we feel comfortable at the end, I guess, you know, sort of call it so.
Okay, I think I do have a question for probably our legal counsel. We have two members that are not present tonight. If we choose to table this and address it in the March meeting, and if we have a full board then, is the vote of the full board or just the members that are here today?
If you voted today, it would just be you?
No, what, if we voted it in March?
It would be everybody that's available on March.
It would be everybody in, okay. So the two missing members would have an opportunity to review and discuss and be part of the vote?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Rosemary, as far as the home caregiver, is there, and I'm reading through this and I thought I read through it once, it talks about indoor growing?
What page, I mean?
Right, we do, page seven, page six, seven. Do we, do we talk about outdoor growing? Or is it, does it, does, must it be contained in the house?
Yeah, it's within the house.
Okay, and is it stated specifically? And here's the whole thing is that, you know, so people have gardens and, no, I don't, I don't want somebody to put a couple of plants in their garden.
Right, I did, I, let me reread it again, but I, I thought I had said it had to be within...
Okay.
So all medical marijuana, on page six, number four, "All medical marijuana shall be contained within an enclosed lock facility inaccessible on all sides and equipped with locks or other security..." It mirrors the MMA statute.
Okay.
That permit access only by the registered primary caregiver or registered qualifying patient.
Okay, thank you. So, and the only thing, other thing I want to bring up, I've been doing some research on some of the other municipalities that are discussing medical marijuana in a specific district. One of the things that I've noticed that, I believe two of the, of the municipalities that I looked at are requiring a fence around the entire facility. And, and I just wanted to bring that up to the commissioners and ask if that, something like that seems like it may be feasible or something that we want to look at, that, you know, areas with, or, you know, facilities that have licenses are enclosed in fencing. I'm not exactly sure how that affects, totally fenced in.
Are you talking about the, the commercial facility?
Yes.
Okay.
The commercial facility.
Gotcha.
And, and that, that's what a few other municipalities have implemented as part of the ordinance.
Gotcha.
So just wanted to bring that up and, you know, bring it up for discussion or, you know, and get your thoughts maybe.
So there would be fencing in an industrial district?
Yes, not, not in a home caregiver.
I, I get it. But what type of fencing? I'm just wondering.
You know, it really didn't say with the ones that I read. It just said that there, you know, fencing was required.
And just because I'm wondering too, like, in thinking about logically in our industrial district, are most of the...
Probably backyards are fenced.
Are, are they concrete wall, you know, I mean, like, some of them are separated by...
Yeah, I, I'm just bringing it up because other municipalities have implemented that.
Right, but I'm just saying what we have now currently and how it would look if we were to consider something like that, if we, we had a...
Just bringing that up for discussion. I'm not saying we need to go there.
Okay.
Just bringing it up for discussion.
And my thoughts are we have ordinances in place on fencing, but it's really that if somebody wants a fence, it must be within certain restrictions. So what you're talking about is maybe making it for the industrial zone mandatory, I assume, within the restrictions in the existing ordinances.
That's how some of the ordinances that are being developed that I read are required.
Okay.
So that would be specific to all industrial uses in this zone or just this particular use?
This use, this use.
And the purpose, if you know, for the fencing requirement?
I think, I think some of the, the discussion I read was just for safety. Because, because, you know, it's probably for safety, for maybe more security. Again, I'm just bringing it up as a discussion, I'm not saying...
Well, I think it's a great discussion point.
I don't think we need to go there. We may go there and say, hey, we want it, and the board could not take the recommendation and reject it. So, you know, I figure that, you know, if you want to discuss it, we can discuss it. If we want to add it, we can add it. Otherwise, you know, I'm, I'm good.
So, so I guess to that point, then, as we speak of discussion and Chairperson Blum did, did address this to some extent, and I'm going to, I'm going to tag on to a thought is, I guess I'm somewhat compelled to think that this subject probably would be worthy of having a full board here, not only to, to make a motion on it, but even to have some of that discussion. Because the discussion is warranted. It just, it strikes me that I wouldn't mind having the full board here for all that discussion. So, I know, Mike, you had started with that, and I guess that's where I'm kind of trending towards, that at least I wouldn't mind having all of us here.
Okay, but that doesn't, and...
Doesn't stop us from discussing today.
But it doesn't stop us from discussing the issue there.
No, and I get it. It could still just be extended into next month for further discussion. So I'm not trying to dismiss this conversation at all.
Right, so on this fencing issue and a safety and security issue, I'd like to throw that out and see if anybody has any thoughts on that point. Is the fencing necessary for the safety and security issues? Is it unnecessary? What do the members think?
My only question with the, with the fencing is, does, in the other townships or areas that look at these types of ordinances, does it include like a lock wall gate for when no one's there, or is it just a fencing around the perimeter minus any entrances?
So because a lot of, most of the municipalities are in the, we're probably ahead of most, so, so it's in its infancy. So I guess, I guess sort of what I'm sensing is, it sounds like, because we have two members not here tonight, it sounds like the board's preference may be to gather information tonight at the public hearing and then give more time for research. That's what I'm hearing. And I, I don't, I'm not saying that to take a poll because there's not a motion on the table. But it sounds like that's what I'm hearing. If that's the case, maybe we, you know, we take that information as well and allow everyone to, you know, look into other municipalities, maybe make some calls, see what they're coming up with and see what they're, you know, what they're doing. That's probably the best way to do it since it sounds like we may not want to make a recommendation this evening.
Well, and Larry, you had, you had opened up, which is, have we read this in its entirety? Yeah, but have we completely, at least personally speaking, comprehended the magnitude of the words? And to your point, then, how does this benchmark with other communities and whatnot? So that, that would give us, and that the other members who still aren't here will, will be noticed that they're going to be doing the same type of benchmark research so that they'd be better prepared to discuss this at a better level of conversation next month?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to also say too, like, when you do your research, also maybe take a thorough look at the ordinance that was actually adopted by the board, because most of the restrictions are in this ordinance.
Yes.
And it does call for a detailed security plan at each, at each location. So I don't, it may or may not, I don't know, it's up to you. A fence may or may not be economically wise because they are required to have a security system. But an additional fence of security can't hurt either of us.
Right, exactly. And I did see that, that's why, one of the reasons I wanted to open this up. Let me ask you this question, though. If we put, and I know other municipalities apparently are doing it, but I want your opinion on our legal counsel. If we were to add a mandatory requirement of a fence, or any mandatory requirement, I guess in this case, of a fence, would that be consistent with the requirements under the state law as it now exists?
Well, this was a zoning issue. So if you feel that it's, you know, a zoning requirement for this district, that it's reasonable.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it might not be really reasonable when, once you read everything that's required in here, you know, an additional fence may or may not be reasonable to you. It's just...
But it would be permissible if this commission felt it was reasonable. Okay. Any other questions for Planner or Legal Counsel? Any other comments? Motion?
I believe the motion could be just as simple as to table. That's all it just needs to be then, right?
Right.
Then I'll, I'll just make a motion to table. Table the public hearing relative to the amendments to the Township zoning ordinance.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion to table and that has been supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Unfinished business, there is none. Any new business to be brought tonight? There are none, there is no correspondence to discuss. So I think we are looking for comments from the planner, if any?
Nothing for you tonight.
Okay. Open up the comments from the floor. Anybody in attendance that would like to address the Planning Commission?
Randy Buckman, my address is 40800 Executive here. Just a thought with the fence, is there's a lot of multi-tenant buildings here. How would you require somebody sandwiched in between two addresses to fence their facility if they don't own the building and/or have availability to fence the entire area? I think there's a lot to take into consideration there. And I would like to know which municipalities are requiring fencing. I'm not aware of any right now, unless they're in like agricultural areas where they put in greenhouses, you're fencing the greenhouse structure. That's what I'm familiar with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing no additional, people interested in making public comments, I think we can now move to the next meeting. Will be March fifteenth. This issue will be addressed again then. So if there's nothing further, I think we can look for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Planning Commission meeting is now closed.
I'm not sure, I can't take information from the guys, so if you dive into it further, if you're saying, oh, what about this, or have they considered this over somewhere else?
Perfect, thank you. Yep, I appreciate it.
Or, you know, hey, what about fencing here, or anything similar, anything like that? You know, in town, anything like that, I'm always happy to provide, give some insight for it.
Do you have an answer to the question, like, should we... Do you have an answer to the question last minute?
Yeah, so, yeah, I've pretty much only seen it in rural areas. If you look at some of the surrounding majority of ordinance, or one that may be semi-similar to like a Harrison scenario, Orient Township, an industrial park where it's allowed for no fencing. Hazel Park, a little more condensed, smaller in there, protected, no fencing. The only ones that are talking about it are kind of the more agricultural ones. But again, it is a creative thing. I will say nationwide and so forth, it's not a best practice, why anyone, they've never seen it, you know. I've never heard of an art ordinance where they've gone back and said, oh, now we're gonna fence around these. If you think about it, you know, pharmaceutical facility, widget manufacturer, some of the precious metals, which are a lot of tool and dish, those are all easier targets, these facilities, because of the requirements of state security like Colorado. So really, you know, think about how to plan and zone for it, so whether they're making a widget in there or in the MMFA activities, you know, growing cannabis or refining it, what does it look like from the outside? So there isn't a fence to deter from that, make it look like something doesn't need to be, you know, planned, zoned for. If that marijuana operation leaves that that widget shop was in, there's solar...